Sherry, are we ready to, um, okay.
We certainly can.
Thank you. I've had a request from the council to change the order of the agenda and move forward the consideration of item E prior to item C, which is our next on the agenda. Would that be acceptable to staff?
Stuart particularly is in favor of that. Yeah, no, that'd be fine.
I told my wife midnight, so I'm good for a while.
Okay, so what would be on the agenda would be item E, considering authorized the mayor to execute a franchise agreement between the city of Brisbane and South San Francisco Scavenger Company for the collection and disposable disposal of recyclable materials, organic materials, and solid waste in the city of Brisbane. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Pro Tem and council members. You have before you my staff report regarding the new solid waste franchise agreement with South San Francisco Scavengers Company, which we're bringing forward to you. I'd like to go over some of the aspects of the agreement as well as some of the background.
I don't think the audience can hear you.
Okay, my apologies. Okay, so the purpose of this is to continue to provide solid waste removal services for the community. We have been, over the past year, meeting with South San Francisco Scavenger Company to review the former agreement, which was effective as of March 1, 1999. Since then, obviously, there's been a lot of changes in the law, so we wanted to go through it thoroughly to update the document and to make sure that things were up to current standards and legal requirements. The agreement was supposed to expire on March 1, 2014. Since then, we extended it a couple times to, again, make sure that we capture it as much as possible to update the document. Some of the things that I'd like to note is that, under the former franchise agreement, we were, the services that we received include not only the weekly residential and commercial solid waste removal services, but also provided other services such as our annual citywide yard waste cleanup, management of our annual diversion report to CalRecycle, assistance in implementing mandates such as the AB 341 mandatory commercial recycling law, and other recycling services. One of the things I'd like to note is that, per State Assembly Bill 9 in 39, we're required to have a diversion rate of 50%. With scavengers' services, over the past few years, we've been able to reach that diversion rate. In 2009, that diversion rate was 72%. 2010, it was 79%. 2011, 80%. In 2012, 76%. And we received our most recent report for 2013, which was 80%. In 2013, one of the things that has changed is that we adopted ordinance 581 and approved resolution 2013-14, which established multiple solid waste collection zones for the purpose of having the ability to award separate franchise agreements to each zone if the council deemed necessary. So staff was directed by council to discuss a new franchise agreement for Zones 1 and 2 with South San Francisco Scavengers, and Zone 3 with Recology. We've met, again, we have met with South San Francisco Scavengers over the past year to review and update the franchise agreement. We're currently also meeting with Recology, which we expect to bring forward at a later meeting. But along with our negotiations, things that came up not only include maintaining the current services provided by South San Francisco Scavengers, but will also incorporate several new services. Those new services include things such as organic material collection, increase in containers provided to the city at no cost for the annual yard waste cleanup. Each year, we're given 20 contain, 20 dumpsters to collect yard waste at no cost. That has been raised to 30. And generally, we usually reach about 30 each year, or nowadays, for, or each year for our yard waste collection. Some other things that we will also be implementing, including includes abandoned waste cleanup collection for the city of right-of-way areas, and implementation of a trash container management policy. Some of the things I'd also like to note is that the additional services include ones that are required to comply with the city's 2009 municipal regional stormwater permit requirements. There are several measures that need to be covered. Staff has worked along with the Samhain County Wide Water Pollution Prevention Program and the City and County Association of Governments to implement control measures to comply with the stringent, excuse me, reduction goals, and has determined that several steps need to be taken and funded to achieve 100% reduction, which is the goal, by 2022. These measures include enhanced street sweeping, install approximately seven new full-capture trash devices, maintain existing and future full-capture trash devices, or FCTDs, enhance the collection of all public trash cans and mudd mitt dispensers citywide, implement a polystyrene ban, enhance anti-litter enforcement, enhance storm drain inlet maintenance, enhance public outreach and educational programs, provide for on-call legal dumping pickups, conduct regular manual cleaning of identified streets, and develop and implement trash bin container management program. Some of these measures that the city plans to be taking on will require the current franchise fee to be increased from 2% to 14%. This is a 12% increase in order to be properly funded. The additional services being requested by the city for South San Francisco Scavengers to perform require an additional approximately 5% increase in rates to be properly funded. Overall, this will result in a 17% rate increase. To give you some examples of the new rate adjustments, currently, the residential 32-gallon can is at 24 or 36 a month, and that will go to 28 or 49 a month. The full rate sheet is available in the staff report. I'd be more than happy to go over specifics if you have questions regarding that. Additional items to note is that South San Francisco Scavengers has completed construction of their onsite anaerobic digester, which is being officially commissioned tomorrow. Organic waste that will be composted in their new digester will help fuel several of the vehicles that South San Francisco Scavenger uses for their trucks. As I mentioned earlier, the remaining Zone 3 franchise agreement is still being reviewed and will be brought to council for their consideration in the near future. I know this is a lot of information. Right now, we have representatives from South San Francisco Scavengers that'd be happy to answer some questions as well. Our Public Works Director, Randy Rowell, will be able to discuss more about the requirements of the regional stormwater permit. That concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So, is the Public Works Director gonna make a report as well, tell them about PowerPoint and so forth?
I'd be happy to, sir. I'm prepared to.
Maybe it would be better to have both presentations, and then we can ask questions. Of both.
See, the clerks bring it up. Sherry, could you bring the lights down, too, please? So, those who are in the audience want to see those presentations, they can. Happy noise for your entertainment. It's not quite like Live at Mission Blue, but... Ah, the exchange, yes. We'll see if it works from here. Thank you so much. Want to give it a try? We have the technology to do it from here. This is good. It's finally, finally, the electronics seem to be working. Member Tim, council members, good evening. So, I'm here to talk to you about the increase in the franchise fee, really the largest piece of the increase in the franchise fee, and why we're doing it and what triggers it. So, this is a regulatory agency that is requiring these changes. It's the San Francisco Bay Regional, Regional Water Quality Control Board. You see the order numbers, the permit numbers they have up there. The Regional Water Quality Control Board is a sub-agency of the State Water Resources Control Board, which is a sub-agency of the California Environmental Protection Agency, which is beholden and regulated by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, which implements the laws and the requirements that we are talking about now for receiving waters under the Clean Water Act. What all that tells you at the end of the day is that these agencies have significant regulatory authority, including the ability to issue fines of up to $10,000 a day for failure to comply. So, we were issued what was called a municipal regional stormwater permit. You'll see it referred to frequently as the MRP back in 2009. And there are multiple sections in it. Those of us that work with it all the time just sort of generically use the terms C3, C6, C10. The one we're talking about tonight is trash load reduction, which is C10. And you see the requirements that are in there. Reduce the trash, the free trash, the trash that's deposited on the streets that gets wind-blown, that gets taken away by 40% by this year, and by 100% by 2022. So, what sort of things have we taken, and what have we been doing to try and accomplish that? Well, shortly after getting the order, we started to work with both a regional and a local agency, BASMA and the SMICWIP that's put up there. And one of the things we were trying to develop, and we thought we were working rather cooperatively with the regional board, was an empirically-based model where we were studying agencies throughout the state of California, and in some cases nationally, that had put different restrictions and load reduction measures into place, and that we are then going to apply to the same methods that we proposed to use here. In about June 2012, after having worked on this for over two years, the regional board basically said, eh, this displeases me. Take it away and do something else, which was quite disappointing to us because they had been on board with all the meetings. So, two years' worth of work down the drain. So, what happened after that? Well, shortly after that happening, the executive officer of the board was invited to come out and have a meeting with the city managers and certain members of the city staff. I was present at that meeting. We expressed our concerns back and forth. One of the concerns the board expressed at that time was they really didn't believe that in Samhain County, people at the highest levels were being concerned about the requirements and about meeting the permit. So, as you'll see there, just a few months afterwards, the City and County Association of Governments established something known as a stormwater committee, which is a department head-level committee. I've been the chair of that for the last two years, and we meet down in the SAM Trans Auditorium about every other month, but it typically is Public Works Director, as an occasion, a planning director is put onto that. Again, so now we're up to 2012, the fall of 2012. Staff, we have the folks from SMICWIP, we have a consultant working with us. We started to identify some of the things that are going to be the best trash control measures, what are performance standards. And I've highlighted there for you a couple of the things that the board really thinks they have to have done. They want enhanced street sweeping, and they want product bans and ordinances as their high priority items done first, regardless of whether you're making proper progress towards their goals and such. There is a note down there. We have installed a number of FCTDs in there. Now, what is an FCTD? Effectively, what it is, in most cases, it is an insert in the junction box that you have, or rather, in the catch basin storm drain inlet that you have. And what it's intended to do is sized for a one-day, one-hour flow of water based on that rainfall event, and it captures everything larger than five microns. So, relatively small, but that's the device. And really, that's kind of the end interception. It's really, as I look at it, it's the last thing. It's that string that catches, stops you from falling off the cliff. Because if it's gut to the catch basin, it's gonna go into the storm drain, and it's gonna go out to the bay. So, this is a way of making sure that those pieces you haven't caught by other methods, by other performance standards, do not get to the bay, do not get to the receiving waters of the state. So, obviously, we, with the regional board, we're always doing a lot of reports. We did have to submit something called a long-term trash load reduction plan. You'll see that there are eight steps on there that had to follow. I'm not going to try and go through each and every one of those steps for you, but what I am going to do is show you some maps that give you a sense of what it is we had to do to get to where we are, and how we've come to the understanding of the things that we need to do. So, this first one, obviously, it's a trash generation map. As you would expect, the red in there is the worst areas, the green is the finest areas. And, you know, when you just look at that casually, you've got to think, well, how much work effort could it be to do that? I could, I could get a 10-year-old to color a map like that pretty quickly. In fact, that took the better part of six months to do, because the background work on that was that each city, each permatee, had to go through with the assistant or consultant and establish these different zones based on land use, based on zoning, based on socioeconomic data. We then had to go back and proof it and make sure they had got all that information correctly. And then, based on these different characterization of was it high, very high, low, medium generation, we had to go out and ground-truth, in our case, nearly 50 areas. And the way you go out and ground-truth an area is you have to send two staff people out independently. And they've got a little guidebook that says, okay, you take, you take pictures, you get the latitude and longitude of it, you identify the date and time that you're here, and then you tell us, what did the trash on the street look like? And we have examples for them of here's high, here's low, here's medium. These two people come back, they have to reconcile that. That was then reviewed by one of our team leaders, and then I had to come back and review each and every one of those. And based on that, we went back and revised this map and recreated our generation area. So, it was not a small undertaking. It was something that required a lot of effort and a lot of thought. So, the next thing that we developed after that was we said, well, now we've got to figure out how we're going to deal with that. And you'll see that this map is slightly different than the other ones, because what we now had to do is say, well, we know where the trash is coming from, but we now have to develop a sense of what are the generators of the trash in that area, and try and ascertain what methods are we going to apply in different geographic areas to be most effective at it? And just because one area is all yellow doesn't mean you can apply the same methodology in there, because there are different sources of that trash. So, we had to go back and do that. This map gives you a representation of when we had approximately half of the full-capture devices installed, so it shows you all of the areas that are captured right now by full-capture trash device. This was when we had 13 to 15 of them in. We now, the next time you see this map, we're going to have installed another 85 full-capture trash devices, because that's what it's going to take to meet our requirements under the board. What this is, is just a simple snapshot, and I, and I realize it's a little bit hard to read. What I tried to do for you was just capture the control measures that we are, that we have proposed to the board, and the board has accepted, for just two of our areas. This is trash management area 3 and trash management area 4, which, for your reference, 3 is basically industrial, the entire street industrial, and 4 is the area around the corporation yard. And what those Xs are showing you, the top had a, had a series of dates on top of them when these things are going to be implemented. It shows what we've been doing, what we plan to do, and when we do it. And this had to be done for all 12 of our trash management areas. So, what are the things that have been implemented today? Very, very fortunately, very wisely, the council did pass the plastic bag ordinance back in 2013. That's lovely. We've participated with local agencies, our sister agencies, BASMA and SMICWIP, on the public education. Scavenger, who's here tonight, has been doing the on-land trash cleanups for us, the on-call, which is going to continue under agreement, although frankly, they've been doing that without having it be required for them under the agreement, so we certainly appreciate their cooperation in that area. And then, we've had some activities with the police department. We've had problem-oriented policing, trying to identify loose truckloads, that where you have litter flying off as you're coming down Bay Shore Boulevard. You probably, I think, most of you see that on the side of Bay Shore. We have a lot of wind-blown debris on there, some of that coming from trucks, some of it not, so we've had the police out there monitoring that. I'm happy to report that because we've done all that, we made our target for 40%. We were able to report, as of June 30, that we had received, achieved a 44% trash reduction. So, we're on the way. We're, we're in pretty good shape, but there's more that we've got to do. And unfortunately, most of what we've done, we've either been able to do with grants, which we did with the FCTDs we've installed, or we've been able to do out of hide. But I want to go over the next things, the next steps that we have to do, and I've broken them into three categories for you. So, the first one basically tells you what things are we going to do that are out of hide. So, we're bringing the polystyrene ban to you next meeting. We're going to continue to work with the police and have an enhanced anti-litter enforcement. We're talking about having a very focused enforcement on Bay Shore Boulevard. We're going to keep working on our storm drain inlet maintenance, and we're going to continue to work on our public outreach and our education. That's always one of the most successful things. The analogy I like to use with that very much is it's like the anti-smoking campaign, is that it's been very effective when you start at the school age, folks, because those children, if you remember back 10 or 15 years when we had a much greater population that smoked, when you get those school-age kids to go home and tell mommy and daddy they shouldn't smoke, it was very effective. And so, that's really where we're trying to put the majority of our efforts. So, those are all things we're going to do without any budget increase. What things are new that are just related to trash load reduction are we going to ask Scavenger to do? Well, to continue their on-call illegal dumping pickup, and you'll see that, that they've got a number in this agreement for how many they've agreed to do and what sort of tonnage. They're going to continue to do manual cleaning of our identified streets. We've got a number of streets in all three zones, not a number. It's maybe a hint, off the top of my head, I want to say it's six to eight, where they go out on a monthly basis with a crew and manually pick up trash. That's why Bay Shore Boulevard has started looking cleaner. That's why Sierra Point Parkway looks better. That's why Lagoon Way looks better. That's why Guadalupe Canyon Parkway looks better, because there's been a crew of three to five people out there once a month, manually walking both sides of that roadway and picking it up. And you'll see the numbers later as to how much it's been. It's, it's kind of a shocking amount that we pick up. The next thing is a trash bin container management program. And now, what's that? Well, one of the biggest problems we have here and throughout the region is people can't keep the lids on their trash bins down. And that creates a number of problems. Here in Brisbane, it's most infamous for our raccoons, although I think second on the list of critters is the crows. And the crows may actually be worse. The crows seem to have an ability to pick up really large, hefty trash bags and take them somewhere and just rip them to shreds. To me, that's always the evidence, you know? When it's spread everywhere, it's, it's been a murder of crows that's been taking them apart. It's not a raccoon. So, that, that happens to us. But then, sometimes, we just flat-out have wind. We have, you know, we live in a windy area, you may have noticed, and on occasion, things will just, we've seen trash cans get blown over. But one of the things we really need to focus on, and this is not just residential, it's also commercial. We have people all the time that have those large commercial bins that it's too hard for them to close the plastic lid for some reason. And oftentimes, you'll go out to a site, and you will see the plastic lid will be folded back, and it'll be pushed up against the back of the enclosure, so that if somebody wanted to, they couldn't close it. So, what we are going to require of the scavengers is that they actually utilizing the cameras that they have on their truck. Well, first, we're going to require them to, to have a, a public outreach, to have an education and encouragement program. And then, we're going to require them to develop a program so that when they come up to a business, or they come up to a residence, and the trash can lid is not closed, they're going to take a camera shot of it. And then, the first thing we're asking them to do, and part of it is they have to develop a program for us to look at and to approve, but it's to send the customer a letter that says, hey, you may not be aware of this, but it's really important that you keep your lids closed. We require that. It stops the wind-blown trash. It stops the critters from getting into it. By the way, if you just have too much trash, maybe you need to change to a different-sized container. Maybe you need to go to a different container. We're happy to work that with you. If it just turns out that you had an oversized pickup or something, you don't have to cut it all up and put it in your bin. You know, we have these many on-call size things for you. We have these other opportunities to drive, to educate them, to enforce them. But after it's happened once or twice, we need to send them a more severe message. And that message is that, oh, by the way, by forcing a truck to stop and forcing the driver to get out and manually make sure there isn't trash blown everywhere, we incurred a fee, and you're going to pay that fee. So, that's, it's not a citation as much as it is a, this is the cost of doing business. This is what it costs to interrupt a truck for X amount of time during their route and do it, because we're trying to encourage people to do the right thing and discourage them from doing something they shouldn't. So, now, the next one. These are the things that the franchise fee would be paying for. We need to enhance our street sweeping by a factor of five. That's how much we need to, to do to get within current standards. And that's current standards as defined by the regional board. As I talked about earlier, we need to install 70 FCTDs over a five-year period. And one of the problems with them, one of the challenges with them, is that you actually have to maintain them. They are not a self-sustaining device. You have to maintain them at least three times a year, because we have to go out to them before the rainy season, we have to go out to them during the rainy season, and after every major wind and rain event, we have to go out and look at them as well. That's a challenge, and so, we're going to have to somehow find a way to do that. And the last item we're looking at is enhanced collection of the public trash cans and the mudd mitt dispensers, because those become a problem as well. If you go out to some of our existing public trash receptacles, you'll find that they're a bloody mess, and that they get overflowed, and people will go out to them, and sometimes they'll try and put the trash in top and stand on it to make it brush down. Sometimes, when that doesn't work, they'll just throw it on the side of the can and leave it there. And guess where it ends up? Well, rather quickly, it ends up in the lagoon. So, what we need to do is increase the service we have to make sure those are being picked up on a more regular basis. We've already got those monitored, we've got them identified, we have the latitude and longitude of them, we know the current frequency we're working on with them, and we know what we're going to continue to do with them. So, with that, I'd be happy to take any questions on how we're going to try and meet the regional board's requirements for trash load reduction to receiving waters.
And just one other suggestion. You might want to, somebody might want to give an explanation of these additional pages before we...
So, additional pages that I handed to you earlier, one is a summary of proposed amendments to the franchise agreement that you have in front of you. We've had a couple meetings over the past couple days and noted some other areas where we needed some clarification or cleanup language on, and that's what the list is here. The other one, there was a request for information about the rates broken down to what the charges are per cubic foot identified in comparison for the residential property areas and the multiple unit residential property areas.
You were on the committee that was working on this. I was just reading them through, since this is just, I just got this. So, if you'd like to speak on that, that would be good.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that the Solid Waste Subcommittee has been working with the staff, and the staff, of course, has been talking with the representatives of South San Francisco Scavengers over the course of many months. And Clark is the other member of the Subcommittee. And so, we've had lots of meetings, and as was pointed out earlier, you know, a 20-year-old agreement with all the changes in laws and technology and situation meant that there was a lot of stuff we had to do to bring it up to date. And so, there were multiple meetings and a lot of drafts. And we had another meeting just very recently, and we noticed a number of, still a few glitches that had... that had not been adequately addressed. One of which was this whole issue, and I'm hoping that the Scavenger Representatives will speak to this. And that is, you know, a really important part that Maria mentioned of the new service, which is the picking up of the kitchen waste, which are called organic materials. And there's going to be a system for doing that, and it's going to be related to the yard waste. And that wasn't clearly, and that's what you'll see some of the things on this list here. Of course, yard waste was previously picked up every other week, and now it looks as if we're going to have a weekly pickup that involves the organic materials. And if so, then that means in effect, because it's going to be in the yard waste can, in effect, it's there, it's going to be picked up every week. And if I'm wrong about that, then I'm sure I'll be corrected. But anyway, the language didn't quite clearly respect that change. And also, even the rate structure didn't have that fully embodied. So we wanted to point out that this is really a new service. And we wanted to make sure that the agreement was really clear about this new service and what their mutual obligations were. And so that's a good part of the changes here.
So for our green waste, we don't have to look at the calendar anymore?
Right. Hopefully, it'll be picked up, you know, every week. Now, that's for the residents and, you know, and things get complicated, and I'm hoping they'll speak to this too, because we have these different zones and different kinds of pickup areas. And what's true for old residential Brisbane is not quite true for the Northeast Ridge, which is different, which is also not really true for multiple residential places like Altamar, where you have a different process. So I hope that maybe, maybe the staff and the Scavenger Representatives could speak a little bit to that too, because that's a complication in this process. Because the Northeast Ridge hasn't really had yard waste pickup like this part of town has. And the multiple residential like Altamar on the Northeast Ridge, you know, they have a whole different system, and they haven't really had this yard waste separation out process, which we're now going to have, because they're going to have the opportunity of also submitting their kitchen waste and be collected. And there's a process that's going to be set up for that. And I don't know how entirely clear that's going to be. So I guess I'm asking, now asking a question, because when we talked about it just the other day, it wasn't entirely clear. It's clear in old Brisbane, the process is clear. The Northeast Ridge process, I think, is worth, for the non, you know, multiple residential, for, you know, for the individual townhouses and properties, that's one thing. And then the multiple residential is quite another. So I wonder if you would speak to Maria or whoever else wants to speak, to give clarity as to how we're going to do this.
Right, perhaps now would be a good time for our South San Francisco Scavengers to go over the ideas behind the organic material system and what they have in store.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, Council members. My name is Paul Formosa, I'm the CFO for the South San Francisco Scavenger Company. In addition to those questions, Mr. Miller, we also had a question about what the food waste bin would look like for residential use and whether, what kind of material it would be made out of. And this is the bin that we are looking at, I don't know if you'd like to pass this around, I'd be happy to, if you'd like to look at it closely. Unfortunately, that's our only sample, so I have to bring it back with me, I'm sorry. Let's see, so how does the, how would the organics program work? Well, the plan is, as you said, for residential properties, which are defined as being one to four units. Each property would get one of these bins to use to, it's more of a reminder to place your food scraps in with your yard waste. And so this would be used in the kitchen or in the, in the living area as a kind of a visual aid to remind the resident to separate their food scraps from their other trash and use that to transport them to the yard waste container that they already have. Empty the contents into the yard waste container. And then at that point, when the, when we are ready for, to implement the program, we would switch to weekly pickup of what would now be the organics container and yard waste and food scraps together. And so that would be, that would switch to weekly at that point. We are close to being at that point. The project, I was looking at the, the earlier website where there was comments about, you know, we should have composting and that the Scavenger Representatives were here in June 2012. And I said to Doug, I said, was it that long ago? My God. We did run into some roadblocks along the way in building the anaerobic digestion facility, but it is pretty much complete at this, excuse me, at this point. It's not, it needs to be commissioned, it needs to be tested, needs to be filled with the bacteria and so forth, that'll be used. And it is, that's going to take at least a month, month and a half probably. And so when we were asked, when would we actually implement this program? We said, well, by January the 1st for sure, but probably earlier. So as soon as the project is ready and it's been tested and it's working, then we will be rolling out the kitchen pails, we call them, and switching to the weekly yard waste cleanup. Excuse me, switching to the weekly organics collection, excuse me. Then you won't have to look at the calendars anymore. We were hoping we wouldn't need them this year, but as it turned out, we needed them for the whole year. Some of the other questions, Northeast Ridge, which the units that don't have yard waste containers, because they haven't had yard waste, but are still qualify as residential property according to the definitions in the contract. They may need yard waste containers, we may have to give them those, and so that they will have an organics cart at that point, if they don't already have one. We do have some smaller sizes, so they wouldn't have to necessarily have the huge one. But we could go with a 32 gallon size. And so we'll be looking at those, we'll be basically implementing house by house in that case. Larger multi-family residential properties currently, as you mentioned, have a different type of a collection system now. So, for example, Altamar. Altamar has somewhere in the area of about 80 plus trash bins at this point. So like other commercial properties, or like other properties, commercial as well, they would be in a position to actually reduce some of those garbage containers and change them for organics containers. And so overall, their, their collection would be similar to what it is now. And the charges would probably be the same, or maybe even less. But they would be separating, they would have the opportunity to put the organics in organics carts and trash in trash carts. But the overall volume of the services would, would be the same, but it would basically be switching one for the other, is the general idea. I hope that answers your question, but I'm prepared to. Go on. It would be the same sort of a program for, say, a restaurant or maybe a grocery store or some other food scrap type business. If they have, say, a four-yard container now, and they wanted to switch to a three-yard container for trash and a one-yard container for organics, they'd still have five yards of service, and, but they would have the opportunity to divert that much more organic material.
So one of the things we were looking at, as Carolyn knows very well, and some of us have been up there trying to figure this out, that Altamar now, is trying to use bigger bins rather than a lot of smaller ones.
Yes.
And simplify the pickup process. But that requires some reconfiguration of the fences around them, so that the entrance way is bigger.
Yes.
And so that's one of the things we're working on.
Yeah, everything, yeah.
And the idea is hopefully that we can, you know, reduce the number of separate containers. We probably have to have a trash bin and then another bin for organic materials is what I'm presuming. But overall, I mean, as you said, the volume will be the same, but the, the containers will be differently configured. Hopefully, the idea is that it might even end up reducing the cost that is being currently paid, if all this works out. That's the idea anyway, and whether that's going to happen or not is still being worked on, right? Am I correct about that?
Oh, yes, absolutely. We've been more than willing to work with Altamar especially, or any other customer, to implement those kinds of changes. I know what you mean about the enclosures at Altamar, it's an unfortunate design. It was designed specifically for the carts, it seems like, because that's exactly how big the openings are in a lot of cases. Not all of them, but a lot of them. And that's, that is a difficult situation. But it's not insurmountable. But we are willing to, we're more than happy to work with them on that. That would, in that particular case, lead to a lower overall cost by switching from what is basically a very labor-intensive situation to a less labor-intensive situation. And any opportunity to do that, and it would probably actually be easier to manage from a litter standpoint than maybe what they have now. Because the bigger the bins, larger things fit in them, don't stick out the top, that sort of thing. And so, no, that's a great plan. Actually, we've had, I think, some of our representatives have met with Maria to tour the site and make recommendations. Our equipment guy, I'm the office guy. But we do have, I did bring with me, actually, if you'd like to see, copies of the outreach material that we're going to use for, or at least some, well, it's one phase of it anyway. This is more the food scrap collection for businesses, I'll leave these here. Just to show you that we, we really are going to do this, even though it's been since 2012, my apologies. But this is the sort of outreach material we plan to use for businesses. And it would be a similar situation for residences. It'll be easier to implement at the residential level. But multi-family and businesses will require a more personal touch. And we are working on that as we speak. So outreach will be a big part of that, and education and so forth. And, but it all hinges on the digester actually functioning. And so until it's functioning in the next couple of months, that will, you know, that will then be the time to start rolling out the program and doing the outreach.
So I have a question for you, on, on your service guide that you provided here.
Yes.
The, the type of trash cans that are up at the Altamar location, are the 96 gallon or?
Yes.
The green toders is what they have?
They have gray, they should be gray ones. And they also have blue ones for paper. And this is more the residential. I'm sorry, I didn't bring the one that shows the large blue toders, but they also have 96 gallon blue ones. They look exactly like the green ones, they're just blue. And those are used for bottles, cans, paper, cardboard, that sort of thing. They have about 80 of those as well, somewhere in that area.
So they're all on the, the size of, of carts, I guess, what's the difference between a cart and a toter?
I'm sorry, I use the term interchangeably, it's really the same thing.
Okay.
Yeah, toter is the brand name, a more generic reference would be a cart.
Okay, but it's the ones we're familiar with in our residential service.
Yes.
Oh, there's another picture for me.
We had a, a request to bring some pictures of some of the different sizes, and so that's all I could find on short notice, I apologize.
I appreciate it, no, it gives me a good visual reference to understand when people are asking me. And, and so the 96 gallon really is a half yard container?
Yes.
Same, same thing?
Yes, a yard is about, is 200 gallons. So 96 gallon is basically half.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I do have.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hi, I'm Doug Button with the Scavenger Two. I just wanted to say something Paul mentioned, anaerobic digestion in our digesters. A lot of people don't know what that is, but essentially, we're going to take the yard waste that's at your house right now, or your apartment, or your business, and your organics, mix them together on site at our property, put them in an enclosed environment and a closed digester. And it goes in there for a 21-day process, where we're going to introduce bacteria to it. Just same bacteria that's in a cow's stomach or at a sewer treatment plant. But that bacteria helps process the organics or the materials we put in there into a compost. And during a 21-day cycle, we extract all of the methane and gases that it's producing. And we're going to run that through a cleanup system and make that fuel or make compressed natural gas available for our trucks. And so literally, a month after we pick it up, the truck that's going to be picking up the next month's material is running on natural gas that's being produced by your own food and your own yard waste. And so we're kind of doing a little of that for having an area to make compost, for finding a way to make a transportation fuel, and all of this is part of our sustainability. Because we, like you, are facing global warming. We have issues about trying to reduce our carbon footprint by at least 20%, which we've already done by just switching to natural gas. But by using a biomethane gas we're producing, that gas is recognized on a carbon intensity scale at minus 15. So it's great stuff. And the more cooperation we have from businesses, residents, and everybody here, the more gas we're going to make and the less effect we're going to have collecting in your neighborhoods with carbon emissions and all that. So it's, it's really important, it's fun stuff for us. And like Paul says, we were supposed to be up by mid-year, there's been some challenges, but we will be up by January 1st, and we're looking forward to it.
On that subject, if you don't mind, I'd like to make an announcement. We are having on Sunday, October the 12th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., there will be an open house. Everyone is invited, any resident that, that wants to come down and take a look at the digesters before they go into operation. And after they go into operation, it's not really something you want to get too close to, I don't think. But they are, we will be having an open house, we'll, we'll have some refreshments and so forth. And people, the public is invited to come and, and take a tour and look around and kick the tires, so to speak. That's Sunday, October the 12th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at 500 East Jamie Court in South San Francisco. And also, that information is on our website and in our newsletter that we're including in our invoices.
Thank you. So do we have any questions for staff?
Um, I think so. I did, I sent a bunch of questions already, which have been answered quite a bit, but I still have a few more remaining questions. So how do the rates that we're going to be charged compare with neighboring cities? I know staff said that we're looking for, they had sent some requests to some neighboring cities, just to get a sense of comparison.
Unfortunately, I was not able to get a full scope of that. What I did provide earlier was that we, we did do a basket study, market study back in 2012 to give you a sense of what the rates were at that time.
And where is that information?
I believe I thought it was forwarded, let me see if I have a copy here that I can provide. Um, I believe I thought it was forwarded. Let me see if I have a copy here that I can provide for you.
I thought it was an attachment that.
It was an attachment.
That's what you said. It was in an attachment to to the doc, to the agreement itself?
Uh, no, it was um in response to the questions that you had.
Email that was sent.
I see. Okay.
And and we can, if if you don't have that, I mean, we can provide that uh for the council at the next meeting. And then hopefully, I I know Maria's reached out to some neighboring cities to try to get the, get their rates, and we can bring that for, you know, in two weeks also.
Okay. Yeah, I think that would be good to know. I mean, cause two thousand twelve, you know, they didn't have the anaerobic digester. And so totally different technology and different requirements at that time. And we talked a little about the ridge. Can, I I'm not too familiar with the service at Altamar. I understand it's different. But so are, is Altamar right now receiving, it sounds like they don't have any yard waste.
That's correct. We do have landscaping services, so.
Right, they don't have any?
We don't have any.
Any resi- yeah, okay. And then what about um viewpoint? Do they have yard waste? They don't have any?
They do not.
They wouldn't either. Okay. So with the new um bins, that'll be for the the food composting. If they wanted to put yard waste in there, would they be able to, if they had any like interior plants or anything like that?
I think for, in terms of the um the townhomes and the single family homes up there, um, that's something we're still kind of working through. There's uh a question came up in terms of whether the properties up there can accommodate three carts. So we're doing a little bit, a little bit more research on that to see. So that'll probably something that we will also bring back at October second meeting. Um, but the intent is that if, that for the single-family residents and the townhomes, that they would have the ability to have that, well, they would receive the third cart so that possibly a smaller or um green waste cart, so that they can put the organic waste into it. They would not have the yard waste, of course, to put in there, but they would have a separate cart to put the organics in.
Okay, and where are the carts? Um, how, where are they in relation to the residences? Like, is it?
It would be like your your um, your other service carts, that they would be for each individual property, for the single families and for the townhomes.
Mm-hmm. So I I haven't been up to Altamar to look at that, where the trash collection is.
So for Altamar, it's different because there are garbage enclosures collectively, they're spread out throughout the um, the parking areas. So approximately every two or three buildings, there's a collection of a certain number of it. Unfortunately, because of the way Altamar was set up, um, there's no uh conformity to them. There there are a different number of containers in each section, which makes it a little bit challenging in terms of what um we were trying to help Altamar with in terms of trying to switch over to larger front-loading carts instead of the half-yard toders. Each area, for instance, um at my property, there are uh, I believe, four or five um garbage carts and then three recycling carts. The way they're set up, in theory, it should be able to be replaced with a two-yarder for the garbage and maybe a one-yarder for the recycling. But you go next door to another garbage enclosure for the next properties next door and um a couple buildings down, and it's completely different. Maybe they only have two or three in that area. So it's a lot of um figuring out what's the proper size for these areas, what will fit in the garbage enclosures. Um, so it's, it is a very challenging thing that we're trying to work through.
Okay. Um, and then, you know, we, uh, I see there's all this news, good materials about like having people, you know, learn about what what they should recycle. It it sounds like, correct me if I'm wrong, but um recycling is not required, but it's, you know, it's voluntary? Or is that, am I, is there any way to, you know, if people are not complying, or if they're not recycling what they should be? I can notices be sent out and saying, you should be recycling this instead of putting it in the trash? Or how do we um, how, with businesses, how can we make sure that they're actually following through with the the food composting especially?
Maybe um Paul can talk a little bit more about the um outreach. They do have a pretty extensive outreach program that they're trying to, again, init- um initiate along with the organics coming on board, so.
Yes, um, these programs are voluntary. Historically, uh, everyone has sort of shied away from trying to make them mandatory, although it's not unheard of. Um, there are cities where uh these pro- participation is mandatory. And um there can be anywhere, anything from, you know, uh warnings to fines for putting recyclable materials in a trash cart, for example, as opposed to putting them in a, in a recycling toter. Um, cart, excuse me. But um, in this area, in the, in the San Francisco Bay area, at least, that has not been done. Uh, and it and it's been more, instead of uh more carrot, less stick type of approach. And so it has been, uh, the focus has been mostly on outreach, education. As the Public Works Director alluded to earlier, uh, you try to to uh teach the children, and the children will will teach the family in a lot of situations. Um, and so a lot of our outreach has been geared towards, towards school-aged kids. We have tours of our facility every year. Actually, we get a lot of participation from the Brisbane schools. They're very regular visitors in the springtime uh to the facility to see what goes on there and uh learn about recycling and so forth. Um, but, sorry, I digress a bit. But uh, but we do focus more on outreach. And when it comes to the uh, the food waste and the food scraps, um, especially in a commercial situation, that's, that's, there's a lot of education involved. There's a lot of outreach involved. There's a lot of uh one-on-one meeting with uh managers, um with uh the people who uh clean up and actually collect the trash within an organization, you know, trying to teach them what to do with it next, but you know, put it in this one, not that one, uh sort of thing. And that's ongoing, uh because there's a lot of turnover in those situations generally.
Right. And so, you know, like when you go to a certain restaurant, you'll see they'll have like, or certain, like, for example, at the zoo, you know, they'll have, you know, different containers for trash. It's, it says like landfill, recycling, composting. And so, you know, the containers are already there for you to, you know, pre-sort your your trash from when you finish a meal. So is that something that you're gonna be encouraging the the restaurants and businesses to do within their organizations?
Yes, exactly. And uh, like I said, that takes, it takes a lot of onsite visits. Um, it's something that we do already with uh just to encourage people to recycle. But uh, it's even more important um when it comes to food waste. And uh, actually, there's some, there's a lot of confusion sometimes about what goes in which container.
Yeah.
Again, I don't mean to step on Paul, but to add to that, a couple of years ago, state passed Assembly Bill three forty-one that requires mandatory recycling on large generator, uh generators four cubic yards or more, and apartments of five units or more. We surveyed everybody along with the city, all of the large customers in town. Brisbane, like the rest of our area, most of the large generators have recycling. Uh, does that mean they're doing all recycling? No. Uh, there's still more that can be done, and we're trying to sign them up for more and more like this organic stuff that we're bringing. Again, right now, uh, the governor has a few more days to sign uh a bill of uh AB eighteen twenty-six Chesbrough, uh where it's going to ban organics from landfills. Okay? It starts uh softly that it uh hits generators of eight cubic yards or more, which not a lot of places generate eight cubic yards of organic waste, or food waste at one time. But it ratchets it down. It starts at eight cubic yards. In the next couple of years, by twenty twenty, organics are gonna be banned from a landfill, and essentially, everybody's going to have to do this. But again, um, AB three forty-one had mandatory recycling. It pushed the rate from fifty percent to seventy-five percent. But it's a goal, not a mandate. And they're doing it without fines or levies. They're trying to get people to do this as a way of life, and and it's the right thing. So, you know, there is legislation. But again, it's like Paul says, we're not trying to force people into it. We want people to do it on their own.
Sure, sure. Um, one of the questions I had asked um staff to look into was the collection of uh recyclable plastic bags, like the films you get from produce at the food market, or uh, you know, when you, when, if you have any plastic bags still hanging around, um, or the newspaper delivery. Um, you know, I've been collecting them and taking them to Safeway, but we don't have any place in town. And that's something I've been trying to to push. Is that something that you would be able to provide that service?
Uh, well, we were talking about that today. Um, first off, uh, I know you re- you recognize a band bag just as most of San Mateo County does. Uh, again, the bill was defeated this year. That's gonna make it a statewide ban on film bags at grocery stores. Uh, various reasons why it was defeated, but it's being reintroduced even right now for next year's session. Uh, that's going to ban anything that's a a plastic bag at a grocery store in the future. So there will be that many less. Um, the big problem for us, which is collecting those in a recycling bin, is uh, they generally, that's where people deposit stuff, and we have to empty those bags. The other thing we do, sorting of cans and bottles mechanically, and those bags become a nuisance for us. First off, in a collection truck, they blow out. Secondly, out of, in a collection box, they blow out. When they get to us, they wrap on all their machinery and ruin it. But that doesn't mean they don't have some value to recycle, and we try and do it. The thing is, it takes hundreds of thousands of them to get even uh a one-ton bale. Um, the other factor is that, you know, uh, everything for us is labor. So doing it in that sort of thing is really difficult and expensive. But we were suggesting, talking that if we can find uh a centralized location, maybe we can put a bin there and we can have a drop-off and come and collect those things in the future.
Like at the library.
I mean, we still, we still handle them, and we do film plastic. Uh, we think there's gonna be less and less and less as the future goes. But uh, it's still something that needs to be recycled, and we can, as long as we make it convenient and easily for all of us.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um. There were a couple of minor edits that I had mentioned, and I think that staff said that they were gonna, they were going to be um implemented. And most of them were um pretty minor, or like, some of the, one idea or one issue that was actually mentioned here was that when you're talking about yard waste and organics being collected in a separate versus a single container, there's some ambiguity in the agreement as to that.
Yeah, we saw that.
Okay. Um. And I noticed that um, what's excluded is, you know, certain materials like motor oil or corrugated cardboard or mixed paper. Can you talk about what mixed paper is and what people should do with those?
Well, what, that's, that's sentence, that's one of those things we notified today, or that's uh paragraph. It's from the old agreement. We do collect motor oil. We just don't provide a container for people to uh, uh, for them to fill. Uh, they have to put their own containers out on the curb, and we collect it. We don't provide separate containers for mixed paper. Although, we do in some cases, for commercial customers, we collect mixed paper. But what we collect in our cart is all paper, mixed paper, newspapers, corrugated, um, rotogrevir, which is um the magazines like uh The Inquirer, things like that. They're, they're, all paper, mixed paper is is collected. We just don't do it separately. Uh, the same thing with cardboard. We don't provide a separate container at the residence to pick up cardboard. We ask that you put it in the bin or tie it up, and we'll collect it.
Okay, so it's not included from collection. Will that be clarified then?
Yes. It was twenty years ago. That was kind of overlooked this time.
Okay. Okay. Great. Thank you. That's all.
Randy, you have any questions for staff or?
Not anymore.
Um, I have a couple. So um, I'll try and make it brief, cause it's already eleven fifteen. Um, so Randy, uh, NPT's. So um, so we have these requirements. Are we receiving any funding from the state or the federal government to mitigate the requirements that NPT's is requiring?
Absolutely none, sir.
Okay.
From the federal government, we simply have the Clean Water Act, and what the regional board relies on is that it's existing law, and you have to deal with it. And it's not an unfunded mandate. Have a nice day. Come up with funds for it.
Okay. And so, and then that's part of the the increase that we're.
Absolutely.
You you talked about it, but uh, just wanna make uh, make it aware, make everyone aware of the unfunded mandate. And then um, is it for all cities in in the state? Or is it just the cities that are near bodies of water?
So the municipal, the municipal regional permit or the NPT's program?
The NPT's program.
So the NPT's program is from the Clean Water Act. It's from all, it's for all municipalities. And in this particular case, municipal separate storm sewer agencies that discharge to what are considered receiving one, water. So that could be a bay, that could be the ocean, that could be rivers.
Okay. All right. And then um.
Which is just about everybody.
Yeah, uh, me, you know.
Unless, unless you live in a horse hoof print in New Mexico, yes, sir. It's just about everybody.
And uh, in your presentation, you 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 mentioned uh street sweeping.
Yep.
And um, of course, it's, it's been difficult in Brisbane, central Brisbane to to do that. Um, I I I guess you're gonna be coming back to the council with some recommendations on how to do a better job with implementing that.
Well, I don't know that we'll need to do that, sir. I mean, frankly, part of the question, part of what we've realized is that we are never gonna be a community. Let's just pick on San Francisco. We're, we're never gonna be a community that's gonna say, thou shalt not park here, you know, for these hours. It's just not feasible. We don't have the parking supply and the options for people. Be- because we're so small, I mean, what do you do? Say, nobody on Monterey can park on the street this day. Well, where are those cars gonna go? We don't, we don't have that opportunity. So our approach has been to deal with our vendor and to work with them to get equipment that will be able to work in our streets. So the closest analogy I could use, it's something called a MADVAC. And it looks more like a Plaza-style sweeper. So if you've ever, you've probably seen it down in South San Francisco. They've got one that they use on Grand Avenue, so it's a gentleman, he rides around on something. It looks kind of like a big lawnmower on steroids. And it's got a huge hose on it that sticks out. And so it's, it's equivalent to that. There are some that that have a cab on them, and they've got what they call a wander hose so that the operator can get off and get in between cars. And I, I think that's probably the easier way to deal with it. To have the vendor get a piece of equipment that works, rather than trying to develop this giant parking battle of where cars go to.
Yeah. No, I think that's good. Um, where I live on Humboldt, uh, there are some trees that, overhanging, and they're kind of low, and so the the street sweeper goes around, and then there's that pile of of needles that just stays there. Whereas that, that vehicle could could make the cleanup.
Yes, sir.
Um, on page uh three, and the last paragraph under recycling, recyclable materials, um, you know, it talks about charities. And so um, are we setting up some kind of uh ability for um, to collect recyclables so that then they could be used for uh charities to raise money?
I'll have to defer to Maria on that one, sir.
Okay. Now, I'm just thinking of uh the school district right now. They've been, you know, collecting a bunch of bottles and cans, and and they're at the hardware store. So I mean, is, it'd be great if there was a way that you guys could pick it up and then the school or the charity, whatever, gets credit for the recyclables.
That can certainly be done on a, on a case-by-case basis. In fact, we do that with uh, I think it's with BES, where we, we assist them in their collection of recyclables. But this, what this language is aimed at, uh, maybe you remember, uh, before everybody went to curbside recycling, organizations used to have newspaper drives, like uh, the Boy Scouts and so forth. Used to have our school, our schools, or maybe churches, used to have newspaper drives, for example, where they would collect newspapers, maybe quarterly, maybe every six months. And this sort of language was essentially meant to not outlaw that. So that if they wanted to continue to do that, um, they would not be in violation of the franchise agreement. That's, that's the essential. This is the same language we had in the, in the existing uh franchise agreement. And it's basically meant to carve out an exception for charities um conducting various recycling efforts.
So what about, you know, the, I guess, you, if you, if you recycle a small amount of of containers, you get the CRB.
Yes.
And then over a certain amount, then it goes to the the weight, correct? So if um, a school wanted to collect their bottles and cans, instead of hauling it to your facility, could there be a a pickup of those, of of those bottles or those recyclables? And then you weigh it before you toss it into whatever you do with it at your facility. And then um, that, say it's the school district, as you said as an example, they could. And then that, say it's the school district, as you said as an example, they could then get the check?
Right, that's exactly what we do for Brisbane Elementary.
Okay, so you, you are doing that?
Yes.
Okay, further, okay. That's good. I didn't know that, so.
It's been going on for a couple of years.
So, okay, so that's how you do it? So you pick it up at the hardware store, or is that the location?
Um, it's collected at the school.
It's collected at the school?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
And then that can get into the, that can impact the diversion rates? Or, I mean, so that, whatever's collected that goes to, for the CRVs and for the schools, that's still, I didn't realize where that went. So that still goes to you, and then you can?
No, we give them the CRV.
Or you give them the CRV, but it can still increase your diversion rate?
Yeah, every, every pound that doesn't go to the landfill helps meet the goals that the state has set, which are basically, they don't really look at the diversion rate in the traditional sense. They look at it more in terms of, well, what, what was the number of pounds per person per year that was disposed of? And so everything that is diverted that doesn't go to landfill, like these perhaps bottles, cans never, but bottles, you know, sometimes do. That, anything that, that doesn't go to landfill, then that lowers that number and helps keep the pounds per person per year at a lower figure, which is what the, how the goals are defined now by the state.
Okay.
But yes, essentially, yes.
I didn't realize it was based on pounds per person per year. So it's not a comparison between the recycled, I thought the way, the contract, it was the, it was the different, it was, you know, the ratio of recyclable to, versus trash, versus going to landfill.
They have a tendency to change the way that they look at the diversion rate at the state level. And so the new version is, actually Doug knows this better than I do, I mean, but the new version of, of how it's, the diversion rate is calculated has been in effect maybe, I think, only about two years. And so it's, as he said, now, the new goal is seventy-five percent. The seventy-five percent is based on number of pounds per person per year that goes into the landfill.
Per person, is that looking at the number of residents, or what about?
Population.
What about, how does that take into account employees?
That's a good question. It's, it's, it's probably more reasonable than what they did before. There is some adjusting for economic activity, but they tried to keep it as simple as possible. And so, because it, the more factors you introduce, the more complicated it gets, and the more the numbers get squirrely. And so in order to try and keep the whole process a little more concrete than what it used to be, they changed it to focusing on what's actually disposed of in landfills as opposed to what's diverted. Because you, you, there were, there were attempts to, not, not by us, of course, to count things that would never have gone to a landfill. Like, for example, if you start counting how many shoes are sold through charities, resold, used shoes, for example, and you count those as diversion, well, they would have been, they wouldn't have gone to the landfill anyway. They would have been essentially reused. And so, but there was, you know, those kinds of things going on, and, and the diversion rates were, in some cases, you know, questionable. And so in order to, in order to get a, a more solid number, they switched the version to, the way they look at it now is pounds per person per year.
So how does that get impacted by economic development?
Actually... He's the state-level expert.
Yeah, actually, there's business factor, economic levels. They go through and they look at how many employees come to town, and how many businesses are located here and all that. For example, you have a, a lot of transients coming to the industrial park. All of that is factored into it. But like Paul says, it, it's the fourth or fifth generation of trying to figure out diversion levels. But they're just trying to get rid of the scofflaws who are counting resold shoes, or sand that blew off a beach that gets pushed back by the next wind as being diverted. That wasn't going to a landfill. Yet, some cities right by us were counting that and claiming huge diversion rates, and that wasn't so. So the state has been trying to find a good way to get there. And essentially, it just boils down to how many people you have, how many employees come to town, and how good the economy is doing, so to speak. On an up economy, you get some credit one way, on a down economy, it goes the other way. But those factors versus what's going in a landfill each year is, is what we're getting. So the fact of the matter is that if you dispose of, say, a thousand pounds this year, and next year you did a thousand pounds, you may have more diversion if you had an increase in employment activity or, or population. But, but it, it doesn't appear if you just looked at the fact that you still threw away a thousand pounds. So, you know, they do look at things like that. Yeah, it's complicated, but fun.
And then on, let's see, page sixteen. So Randy, or Maria, you know, talking about the different zones where we're going to do the, the litter pickup. Now, I don't know if, if, if this is something that we could require you guys to do, but when you come into town, cross the street from the sign, you know, the sign on Old County Road, where we, and we'll put the political signs up. That, that area tends to collect a lot of trash, and it's kind of not very attractive. When you come into town and you see against the buildings, there's always a bunch of trash. So I don't know if that's private land, and we, we don't have authorization to clean that up. But it would be nice if that, if that was cleaned up.
That's a mix of public and private, sir. Let me take a specific look at that and not do it within the franchise. I think we can deal with that.
Okay, cool. That, that's what people see when they come into town. And then, I know you mentioned Guadalupe Parkway, but I mean, that, that is also very difficult. You have the steep slopes. Is, is that something that we, that we plan to, to try and remove litter from?
We, we are, and we have. And unfortunately, Guadalupe has become a dumping area. That's where the illegal dumping has really started to become a problem. So that's where most of their on-call, I would dare say that's where the overwhelming majority of their on-call scheduled visits have been to.
Okay, so that'll be the on-call thing. All right, and then the last, let's see, page thirty-seven. Okay, so the anaerobic digester. So I am going to be there tomorrow, looking forward to it. But number nineteen says no gifts, and I, you know, and Clay and I, we, we talked about it. But just want to make sure that that's something that we can all attend, and that does not consider it a gift.
I asked the city attorney about it.
So...
He hasn't answered.
Thank you.
It seems to me that, as I understand, that there, there'll be some, a light lunch and some beverages provided as part of the, of the function. It certainly doesn't rise to the level of a reportable gift under the Fair Political Practices Act. And I think sort of the incidental lunch is being provided to the public generally. Would not, I don't think I would qualify that as a gift under the, under the, under the act or under this agreement.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Still looking for food, least.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, and, let's see. Oh, so the, you know, my, my green bin, I've had it forever. I actually used to have three of them, and I, I used a couple for when we worked on that library park. And they stayed down there, and now they're gone. So now I'm down to one, but the lid is, is gone. So that's fine for, you know, my, you know, my branches and grass and things like that, but it's not going to be a good, a good thing for this, this, this way, so.
Yeah, this might be a good time to say it. You know, we own and maintain the bins, and anybody who has a broken bin, or a lid missing, or a wheel missing, or a split in the cart, or anything, you just call us and we replace it. Sometimes the drivers do it, sometimes they don't. So if, if you don't mind, I mean, you just give us a call, or any resident or business, and we replace them. That's part of the deal.
Okay, all right. No, that sounds good. And then, you know, the cost for those green carts, is there any cost for those?
There's not a separate charge for the residents, no. Residents have one single charge, and included in that charge is garbage collection, yard waste, food waste collection, and recycling collection. So all three of those bins, there's no separate charge for any of the bins in residential sector.
Because I have a twenty-gallon bin, so my rate's going to be seventeen eighty-one. So I can have a couple recycling bins, and I can have a couple green carts, and that's all included in that price? Okay.
Yeah. In fact, you know, that's another good point. Currently, we don't offer food waste collection, so that's going in the trash can. You know, as we implement this program, we expect it to go into the recycling, or the yard waste bin. And that space you have there, we're hoping that a number of people downsize. We're believing they're going to go from, you know, a ninety-six, or sixty-four, thirty-two-gallon can down to the twenty-gallon can, possible.
Yeah, okay. And then, you know, just making the lids more animal-proof. I mean, I, I put this, you know, I put rocks on my garbage can and other heavy things. I mean, I, I have this, this jade plant, it's got to be about thirty pounds. I have to put that thing on there, and that's the only thing that seems to keep the raccoons from, from opening it up.
Yeah, they're pretty ingenious, those guys.
They are really smart.
Crows just as, as much, and wind doesn't help either. There's one manufacturer currently looking at making a lid that has a locking mechanism on it. They've experimented with, with magnets and whatnot, but again, you know, a raccoon can open a magnet very easily. But, but this is just a lid with a lock that just kind of turns like a handle lock. And yet it stays locked, even if it's knocked over. It has to be at like a hundred and twenty-degree angle, not at a ninety-degree angle, to unlock. So that works on a truck when we lift it and dump it, but it doesn't work when the raccoon or whatever knocks it over.
Really? So when, when the truck is lifting it, it unlocks it?
Because it's over a hundred and twenty-degree angle, so it will unlock the lid. Unfortunately, it's still a prototype, and it's being looked at, actually in Canada, in Toronto, where the raccoons are as large as the bears, I've heard. So they're, they're actually really looking into it. And we had some demos come to our account, and we said, you need to make these things available for everybody. Currently, it's, it's just a prototype, but with stormwater, with raccoons, with crows, with seagulls, dogs, you name it, they can get into cans and bins, and it helps if we have a place that's easy and whatnot to lock, so. And we don't, you know, the, we don't encourage the rocks, although I understand them, because unfortunately, sometimes if they stay there, they go in the truck too, and you don't want that. I'm sure you probably want your...
No, this is, you know, during the week.
Yeah.
And then I take it off.
Then when you put it out.
Bring it down in the morning, but I can't leave my can out at night.
Because?
Yeah, so I have to wake up early and...
We might be the first ones to get the locks, the locking lid, if they have it.
Yeah. And then, you know, I just wanted to, to, you know, second Lori's recommendation about the plastic bag drop-off. I think that's a great idea, you know, having one of those things like you have at Safeway, and just stuff them in there. So if there is some location that we can all agree to, I think that'd be awesome.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
One question to follow up on Cliff's question. So on Guadalupe Parkway, Canyon Parkway, how far up does your jurisdiction go, like, to when it becomes county property? Because I off, I drive that road every day, and, you know, I'll see like a mattress or other big objects on the side of the road, and I don't know whether it's in the county or whether it's in Brisbane. Who do I call?
So let me help out, ma'am. So it's just about forty yards past Carter is where our lid ends. I believe there's a sign that says county there.
So it's way before you get to the top by that steep, by the park entrance?
Way before that, so just past Carter on your left-hand...
Yeah, and that's where most of them are there.
On the left-hand side, but no, no, just past Carter, just immediately past Carter on the left-hand side. There's that steel gate fence. It's just, it's ten yards beyond that.
Okay. Yeah, most of the dumpings I see are then past that, so they're, they're not within...
They are.
Our jurisdiction.
That, that's correct, ma'am. We, we do call the county to come out and do that when we see them.
All right. Thanks.
I have, not for you, for staff, I have one quick question. And should we move to extend the meeting till midnight?
Yes, I make the motion, extend it till midnight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I have one quick question on the page, the staff report. It says the measure of success is to meet the requirements of the air quality board?
And that was an error on my part. This should be the regional water quality control board.
Okay, thank you. And then on the rates per service, on the residential property rates for the ninety-six gallon or the half-yard totter versus, on the residential multiple unit? It looks like they're being charged twenty percent more for the same size can, because they have more than five units on their rate.
The previous agreement, the multiple-unit residential, was combined with the commercial rates. If you'll see on the commercial rates, under number six, where container services, what we did was separate that out for clarity on what the multiple-unit residential rates are. They are, as you'll see, they do mirror what the container services are before. They were the same, they were in the same category of rates. So that's why they are what they are currently.
Well, just because there was a past discrepancy, or shouldn't mean that there should be now. If it's a ninety-six-gallon totter that's the same, whether you have five units or ten units, it shouldn't, it, it doesn't seem equitable to have a difference whether it's, unless there's different regulations. And I heard the gentleman from South San Francisco Scavengers mention a large, large generators. And is that a requirement and a reason why they would need to pay a higher fee?
Perhaps I can have Paul explain a little bit more about the, the rate structure.
I'm, well, I can try to elaborate on what Maria said. The, the half-yard rate for multifamily residential and for commercial is different than the residential, because it originated, that rate was in effect as half of the one-yard rate before we had totter service at residential. There is always been a difference between commercial rates and residential rates. Historically, commercial rates in general have subsidized residential rates. And so when the totter service started with residential, it started from a different rate base than what was already in effect for the commercial rates, which always applied to the multifamily as well. And so I know it seems a little convoluted, and it may, on the surface of it, appear to be somewhat inequitable. I mean, we can look at that, we can rearrange the rates. What's important to us is that the overall revenue cover the cost of the service being provided to everybody. If we, if we restructure the rates so that they appear more equitable, because there's, there's other similarities along those lines as well, it's not just that one. Historically, in the, in the industry, rates have not followed, just stepping back a little bit. They have not followed a cost-of-service type of a, of a analysis. As I mentioned, the commercial rates have been used to, to subsidize residential rates, and in some cases, a lot, in other cases, maybe not so much. But it's, if one were to do a cost-of-service analysis, then you could sit down and you could take a look at what does it actually take to pick up every single can, every single container, versus, and take all that subsidy out of it. We could do that, or we could rearrange it somewhat. It's not intended to single anybody out in particular. It, it has some historical basis in, in... in the cost, relative cost of service, it may not appear to be to this day. And so maybe it's worth taking another look at, but basically overall, we gotta have a certain amount of revenue. It's, it's similar to water service. You can pay a connection fee and not get any water and still pay for it.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll wait and take up my, my questions with staff because I think that's sort of where it belongs. And, and I think that if they're the exact same units, I, I don't see, whether it's historical or not, that a twenty percent difference between a five-unit building and a four-unit building is, is fair for the exact same quantity in the same actual toter. So I, I think that's something that, that we can discuss and, and bring with some of our other questions.
If it's the council's desire to even those out, we can sit down with the scavengers and figure out my certain, understand philosophically your, your, where you're coming from, your point of view. So we can, if that's the council's direction, we'll, we'll do that.
Well, it, it seems that if we, you know, have, have tried to get multifamily housing to be equitable with single-family housing, on the whole, I think that, that charging an excess, a, a different fee doesn't make sense philosophically to me. And I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but a twenty percent increase for the exact same can size doesn't seem equitable.
It's the same can too, right?
Yes.
Is it the exact same can?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, I agree.
And, and, and I know that, that in their building currently, they, they pay a pull-out fee. So they're also paying a, an extra fee because of the design issues that their, their building has. And that's something that may not affect and, and shouldn't be something that, that other people subsidize. But, but I don't see where it should have the other inequity.
Inequity.
Inequity, yes, it's getting late, I'm, I'm stopping being able to speak properly.
Say, just a quick comment about the, the complexity there because when you're looking at the first set of rates.
Which patriarchy, I was looking at this.
Service rates?
This.
Yeah, well, it's, it's essentially the, from the same source. I'm looking, this is a part of the original document that we got with the.
Exhibit B?
Exhibit B, maximum service rates. What, what you notice is that, and the way I was thinking about it, and that's why I brought up my issue earlier, is that when you have residential property service, you're charging an, you know, an individual homeowner residence. And so you can identify, okay, this is how much it's costing per this family. But when you get to the multiple residential like Altamar, you could be having, you know, multiple families could actually be using, you know, one of those toters or one of those containers. And actually, you could have per family, could even be less. The way, I mean, it could be. If we, you know, reconfigure it like we've been talking about and putting in the, you know, the, the bigger containers and making it possible to do it differently. But I don't know that an, an analysis has been done, but it seems at least conceivable that it could come out that way. That actually the families in North, in, in Altamar anyway, if we, if we do it right, could actually end up paying less per family anyway. And that, which is another way of looking at it. But the, what, in order for that to be the case, we need to figure out, you know, how many containers are we talking about in reference to, you know, how many families at the Northeast Ridge? And that needs to be analyzed and I don't know that that, that's been done.
I, I'm, I'm sure that, that it's something that the, the homeowners association has looked at to a certain degree. Just one moment, Carolyn, and I'll, we'll get to your question, or your comments. But it's all a matter of capacity and what storage capacity I have to put out in a week or what capacity their, their group has.
Right.
And it's much easier for me to control if I know my garbage bin is full, that my garbage bin is full and I'm gonna have to wait to take my garbage out. In, in a multifamily situation, it is harder to control that because, you know, they have the expectation of, of extra space.
Right.
But.
Well, you know, say, for example, on Taylor Avenue, we have a lot of multi-unit buildings. So, you know, some are bigger than others, some might only be five units. But I don't know if, if they're all sharing one bin. If they're all sharing, then this rate structure seems fair. If they're all, they all have their own individual.
It doesn't matter, yeah.
Then, okay, then it should be tied, you know, and then it, then, then the ninety-six should be the same rate. Because we don't all get to share, right? We have our single-family home, we're responsible for our garbage. And so I, if, you know, for me, it's just clarification.
Right, and analysis.
Yeah.
Right.
So should we ask for public comments?
Well, I think we should, Carolyn have it up. Why not?
First of all, I don't know that the, the structures can be modified. I was trying to find out what will happen if we cannot, if we do modify for the two, for the larger, you know, not the ninety-six, but the larger structure, I mean, the garbage is late. And it looks to me that it's gonna be very complicated. If we can take down the doors and replace them with a different door, we don't have to modify, we don't have to go through a huge modification. If we have to change at all the structure, then it can be very expensive. We would have to put in a special ceiling. In some cases, I know that at, at the Seven Mile House, they were gonna have to put in a line to the sewer. I, I don't know that we can really adequately change the structures to get in the larger toters. So what I would like is some equity so that we at Altamar can pay the same rate for the ninety, ninety-six gallon unit. I, I, I was listening to this and it sounded to me as though, and I need some clarification. We will have to pay the green waste, is that correct?
Pardon?
Were you saying that we would have to pay?
Are you saying that the, at Altamar, we would have to pay for the green waste as well? The organics, yeah, we would have to pay that, is that correct? Correct, we would have to pay that as well. So, so.
You would obviously cut the garbage service or organic service.
Yeah, but we would be paying for the green, right, that's what I thought. So, so if we could just get this one resolved, or we were paying the same rate for the ninety-six gallon, I think that would really save us what might be a horrendous increase of fees. Because if we, if we switch to a two-foot toter, we modify the structures, which is a lot of structures, in compliance with the new regulations. And I know at Seven Mile House, it was something like forty thousand dollars to, to put in a structure that was gonna adequately meet the new regulations. I don't know that we would have to put that in, per structure, that's a huge amount of money. So, so all I'm asking is that we, we change the ninety-six rate. Because we're, we're gonna be paying for the green waste as well. I mean, the, so thank you.
So I know that staff had some modifications that they wanted to look at with this. Well, first of all, is there any other members of the public who would like to speak? One up, Dana. Waiting patiently for us.
This hasn't been patient, anyway, but thank you. I have observed the scavenger company cleaning up along Bay Shore Boulevard and I, it was, it was a beautiful sight. I mean, they were scurrying up the hills where the former plant, planning commissioner.
John Quilter.
John Quilter used to scramble up the hillsides. But now that I find that my garbage rate is increased for this service, which I consider a public work service, I'm starting to question. And since this increase in our garbage fees is to take care of NEPTEs regulations and I am taxed both as a property owner, which I believe my property owner taxes should pay for city services from that portion. And I'm wondering now what happens to the NEPTEs money that I, we get two hits, I think one's county, one's local. And shouldn't that NEPTEs money that we're already taxed for be paid to the scavengers in lieu of raising our rates? Because, you know, anytime somebody says a twenty percent increase, I know you're saying seventeen, my mind hears it as twenty. Twenty percent increase is significant to people on certain incomes. And I personally do not get a yard waste toter. I have composted for the twenty-two years that I've lived in, or, oh, excuse me, it's more, it's longer than twenty-two years because my son's twenty-four. Anyway, I haven't needed that service because I do it myself. And when we have the one big cleanup in November, that's when I haul the, the, the big waste that doesn't compact down. And so I'm being charged for something, in my opinion, that I'm not gonna receive a service for. And I think you should look at the fact that you're intending to raise everybody's rates for services that should come from other funding sources. Thank you.
Stuart should respond to at least the NPTEs part.
Well, I'm not sure if it's Stuart or it would be Randy.
Both, one or the other.
I was hoping just by looking down at my iPad, I wouldn't draw that short straw, but I see that my ploy was unsuccessful. Well, I, I, I would hope, like, and I would rather that the money come from the NPTEs fund too. But unfortunately, it doesn't. One of the things that we do for you every year is we go through the NPTEs budget. We show you how much money is gonna be obtained from the tax rolls and we show you exactly what we're doing for it. And to date, all that has come out of that has been approximately twenty thousand dollars a year for street sweeping. That is the only amount of money that we've been able to use for this. And I recognize that this is a new requirement and it's not something that we have an option. It's something that's imposed on us by the regional board and the source has to have a fund for it. And, and there may be a conversation as to whether the users who generate trash, as a group, we all generate trash, ought to be responsible for paying for its cleanup because it, it, it does go astray. So that's kind of the conversation, it strikes us that there's a logical nexus there and that's why staff proposed it in, in this format.
One comment that I will make is having discussions at the city and county level that all of the stormwater funding is inadequate. What has been being legislated and where our goals are on, on stormwater pollution prevention are not being funded by our tax rolls. The county is looking at a countywide measure to help as a stopgap funding tax source to increase the fees at that level. But even at that level, it wouldn't cover our expenses. So it, it's something that's gonna come, has been coming out of the general fund budget and will continue to increase in large amounts to meet the new federal and state requirements. So it is something that we need to find a way to fund it. And through putting some of it through the solid waste diversion because a lot of the pollutants are solid wastes, is why they are being put in with the garbage because we all do, some more than others inadvertently add to the, to the waste stream that's, that's going out, out inadvertently. So it is a really difficult and unfortunate situation that we have. And a good thing that we're trying to clean up and not have the waste go out into the oceans and the bays. But it is something that isn't funded, so we do need to find a way to fund it.
Awesome.
Yes.
Hello again. It seems like we're being squeezed out. You know, three hundred percent water increase, twenty percent garbage increase. Well, I sure wish my social security check went up twenty percent.
So do we want to continue this, any further discussion?
Just one in terms of additional analysis or maybe it's already clear, but I think we need to, you know, make, as we've been talking all along, the, the Altamar situation, the multiple residential, you know, look fair. But I think we also need to do some kind of analysis as to the prospects of putting in this new system that we've been talking about now for some time, but there's still some question as to whether it's, you know, physically feasible and what can be done and I, I don't know how we get some real evidence on that because I know that we've been up there, we had a field trip. I know Clark Conway did a lot of measurements and talked to his contractor brother and so we had a lot of conversation about this, but I haven't seen any, you know, final report as to, you know, what's feasible and what can be done, how much it would cost and, and because if we can do some of the things that we've been talking about, it would really, you know, make things a lot better for Altamar if it's, even if it's feasible, but I just don't know what the realities are.
The, the hour's late, so I'll just try to be real quick, quick here. I mean, staff has talked to the building, our building inspection people and I think that we believe that the fix that we've been looking at is feasible and can be done and with, at a reasonable cost. We'll have conversations with Carolyn and, and the folks at Altamar. But my understanding is that we, we have pretty high confidence that we, they can be able to do that at a reasonable cost. And we'll, we'll work with them. Yeah, and, and we've had the conversations with scavengers too, so we'll, we'll work with them and, and, you know.
It'd be nice to have some solid information on that, you know, before we move ahead and lock all this in.
Well, we'll try to tie that up a little bit in the next couple of weeks.
So remind me, what meeting would you like to bring? Would it be possible for this to be brought back to us?
Yeah, I, I'm hoping that we can get it back on the October second agenda. And if for some reason that slips, I'll let you know, but certainly no later than October sixteenth.
So can I get a motion or can I just continue that or do I need to get a motion to continue it?
It's not a public hearing, so I think just, maybe just a motion would be fine. be fine.
Can I get a motion to continue this to the next available meeting, hopefully October second?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and staff can bring back further information.
Madam Protem, I, I think we can probably move the two items that are still on the city council agenda to the October second, but we do need to do the successor agency.
Okay, um, so, um, we'll take item C and D and put that on the October second, um, agenda.
Okay.
And that brings us to any council mayor matters that we need to discuss at this late hour?
I can wait.
And any written communications?
No.
Oral communications too, I see no members of the public wishing to speak, so, uh, I'll take a motion to adjourn to successor agency meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we need to change the tapes? Okay.